I want to ask all the staff to darken the video until it's your time to speak. With the exception of our city attorney, city clerk, and myself, so that we'll know we're ready to start. So Anita and Joel, if you can turn on your mic in your video, we can be ready for when the mayor calls us to order.
Good afternoon, everyone. I think I'm just missing Commissioner Moody.
Mayor, is your mic on? Hold on just a second. I can't hear anything.
It's not letting me unmute.
I can hear you, Mayor.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
You're unmuted.
Thanks, Joel.
Hold on just a second.
Joel! So I... Commissioner Moody, am I missing him?
Yeah, Asante is working with him to get him on.
Okay, okay. We'll give him just another minute or two. Hopefully he'll join us, and then we'll get started.
Yvette, Chief Lehman, and Eric, can you make sure you turn your cameras off, please?
It says my camera's on.
Y'all look good on screen.
Good. My camera should be off.
I'm with the mayor real quick. Hold on.
You're with the mayor.
It should be off.
Aren't talking? Who's talking right now?
I'm going to ask all the staff, Karen, your camera's on. If you please turn your camera off. And Yvette Pittman, your camera's on. If you turn yours off, please. Thank you. We'll check with Commissioner Moody, see if he is on. Just a second.
Rep. Hart will be looking for your kids. Shut my door.
Okay, Commissioner Moody will either be joining by phone and will be able to hear us until he can get his video conferencing started.
Okay.
Just give him about another minute.
Okay. Think I heard somebody. Should we just get started? Let me mute. Hold on. Okay, so we're going to give it just a couple more minutes, so we'll start in about two minutes. Hopefully we'll have figured out the technical difficulties. And so we are also streaming Facebook and YouTube, so for anyone watching this right now, thank you for your patience and your grace as we figure out this new world of technology that we're all living in and trying to have not just public meetings, but large meetings with a lot of people who need to dial in. So we'll just wait another moment and then we'll get started. But commissioners, hopefully all of you received the packet of information and you have that in front of you. I know that the city manager and the entire team worked really hard on pulling everything together as comprehensively as possible to make sure that this is a really informative briefing and update today.
Can I see our mayor, city clerk, Joel, any ETA on when Commissioner Moody will be joining us?
Not exactly sure. Asante just had him call in.
Okay, and you'll have his number to recognize and enable him to speak by phone.
Correct.
Okay.
So city clerk, is he online right now?
Not yet.
Okay.
It's really awkward looking at everybody's face.
A second. Please don't you, nobody, please do not use the chat function, please. Sorry.
All right, that's good to know. I was gonna use the chat.
Okay. Well, Mayor, I think if we at least just get started with the preliminaries and maybe have the... After you start, we can start with some of the protocol for the meeting, and perhaps by then he may join us.
Great. Okay, let's go ahead and get started then. So first off, commissioners, thanks so much. I know that we pulled this meeting together pretty quickly, so thank you all. I hope you are staying safe and healthy as we all live through this pandemic together. So today is not a day for us to make decisions or set policy. This is really an opportunity to get a pretty comprehensive update and briefing from the city manager and all of the city staff who've been working pretty tirelessly this past month, not just in response, but really thinking about the future. There's been a lot, as I know all of you know this, a lot going on, both at the local level, state level, and federal level. Hopefully after the briefing today, we'll all have a really good sense of that, and we'll have a better understanding of what's been happening, and then also what some plans are moving forward. So today, I'm going to ask us to just listen for the duration of the presentation. If you have questions, you can jot those down, and then we'll have time at the end to answer questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager, and I'm going to put my mute button on, and I'll stay muted with you until we get through the presentation. So city manager, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners, for being here this afternoon, video conferencing with us. Before we get into the substance of the briefing, I'm going to ask Joel Honda, our city clerk, to give us some protocol, how the meeting will be conducted today, as well as to tell the public what they can expect and not expect. Joel?
Yeah, so thank you, city manager. So this is a city manager's briefing on operations and what's going on with COVID-19. The purpose of this meeting is for the city manager to brief the city commission on what is going on with the city's response and looking forward to recovery. The city manager may make policy decisions and that, so this is for him to update you. If you have, this is not a time for a city commission to deliberate, being that how this is set up during the governor's executive orders for meetings. So it's not a time for deliberation, but questions may be asked of the manager, and then he'll have staff also presenting as well. Next Tuesday during COW, there will be another update, and that will be where we can work on things that go on towards the night meeting next Tuesday. That suffice for your manager?
That's good. Just one last check. Commissioner Moody, are you on now? Okay, we'll continue work on that. Asante, are you there?
Yes, he is.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you again, commissioners. I appreciate your assistance, your availability today to allow us to update you and the public. And there is just so much information that is being disseminated from federal, state, our county partners, as well as for-profits and nonprofits. We thought it was expedient for us to have an opportunity to give you, our governing body, and...
Sorry, city manager, can I interrupt just one moment? Commissioner Moody is now on.
Thank you.
He's listening through his phone, okay?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Moody, for being on.
Thank you.
Okay, so this gives us an opportunity for us to update you, and what we ask again is let us do the briefing. And if you could hold your questions until the end, the staff is available to answer any questions that you might have, any of the contents or anything related to the response. Because we're not taking any public comment today, the deliberation should not be among commissioners, but should be questions addressed to me or the staff. So if we can begin with the first slide, can you share the screen, please? Still not up yet. We appreciate your patience. Thank you. Next slide. And we'll make sure all of these slides are available on the website. Can you go to the next slide, please? So again, today is an opportunity for us to provide you an update with our efforts related to two areas. One is response, and that's primarily what we have been focusing on, making sure that we keep the public health and safety at the forefront, keep people safe. And secondly, there's been lots of discussions about relief and recovery, and we're going to talk about both of those aspects. Next slide, please. And so with this unprecedented pandemic, this global pandemic, this is different than any other event that we've had in the city of Grand Rapids that has been localized based on a natural disaster weather event. We've been pretty much able to manage it with, for the most part, our own local resources. But because of the nature of the event, the mass scale of it, it requires a lot of collaboration, and we've had excellent partnership with the Kent County Health Department. They are the lead public health agency based on statute. The city of Grand Rapids does provide some emergency response services regarding public safety, but the county is the lead health authority. And so we are really, really following their lead as they are following the direction of the state health authority, as well as federal guidelines. And so we've been collaborating. You see all the governments on the left side, the federal, state, and other local municipalities, and have also received a lot of support from other partners in our community, to include local nonprofits, whether it's around helping people with food access issues or with homeless services, or our local business partners, as well as nonprofit organizations and other community-based organizations. So this is a very, very collaborative effort, and sometimes the public does not understand the nature of it. They look to the city that they live in, as they should, for local public services. But in this event, we do try to speak with one voice, with the county and the city, and we have excellent communication lines. I speak with the county administrator very frequently. The mayor speaks with the board chair. We have a direct tie-in to the emergency operations center for the county, and also the public health department. And so that collaboration has been excellent. We've had good collaboration with our partners in economic development, all of the chambers and related business development entities, the Right Place. They have all stepped up and have done what we've done around here for years, is come together to make sure that we do what's in the best interest of improving and maintaining the quality of life of all of Grand Rapids. Next slide. So in order for us to manage this incident appropriately, in addition to the state having an emergency operations center, the county has an emergency operations center, FEMA has an emergency operations center, so the city also has a localized effort that is activated with all of our response personnel. And we view our response in this situation as, you may have heard, being federally supported, state-managed, but locally executed. So anytime there's a disaster, particularly at this level, the federal government, state governments depend on local governments to help to execute and to deploy and administer the resources they make available, or any directives that they may provide. And in our local execution, there are some cities that are unilateral, where the city has both city and county authority. It's bilateral here. We have county execution, but the municipalities, towns, and villages also have to have localized, executed services as well. So we started within the city of Grand Rapids. Our local EOC planning effort began on the 28th of February when we saw the early advancement of COVID around the country, and we began full activation of our emergency operations center, the Grand Rapids Emergency Operations Center on March 12th. Within that, we have daily briefings that we coordinate with the Kent County Health Department multiple times during the day. We also have internal briefings within the city of Grand Rapids operations multiple times a day. I'm at least part of no less than two or three briefings daily. And again, our goal during this objective is to provide for the health and welfare of our community, to make sure we do what we can to contain or isolate the spread of infectious diseases, our COVID-19, from individuals, and to also to make sure that we're able to have some continuity of essential city services. The water is being able to be, the water is running with quality water, sewage is being, services are being provided, trash is being picked up, public is safe, police and fire services are available, all of the basic services that is required for daily quality of life. And we also do what we can to help with the public understanding, messaging what we're doing, both for our essential services, also to keep them safe. Next slide. So I will, I appreciate Commissioner Rep. Hart's comments at the close of our last briefing on the 14th. And it was then we decided that you had enough confidence in the staff that we could cancel our scheduled March 28th meeting. And one of the reasons we was know that we had confidence is because we have a full-time emergency operations manager, administrator with Allison Farol, and she has been just outstanding, along with the many other men and women in our city. I'm so proud of all of the employees who have stepped up to serve us in this dire, in this difficult time, and they have done so in a very unselfish way. And so at this time, what I'll do is I'll ask Ms. Farol to give us an overview of our emergency operations center and any updated information that we have at this point before we go into details of the response. So with that, Ms. Farol?
Yeah, thank you. Mark, do you want me to turn my camera on or no? I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, you can turn your camera on so the public and the commission can see.
All right, well, good afternoon. So as you can see here, you're looking at our current organization chart for the emergency operations center. And a couple of things with this organization chart. Originally, on March 12th, we started off with what's considered a Level 2 partial activation. So as you're looking at this chart, we originally started off with all of our sections that are there. You'll see operations, planning, logistics, finance, and admin. And then we had a few of the branches underneath operations activated. And as we've gone through over the last almost month in regards to this emergency operations center activation, we've grown our org chart to suit the needs that were necessary in regards to response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And just so you are aware, this is definitely a best practice when it comes to incident command, structure, and management. And to give you a little bit of understanding of what you're looking at, at the top, you'll see that we have our city manager, Mark Washington, who is designated as the Director of Emergency Management of Public Safety, who then that's as myself, as your emergency manager, is the EOC manager through an incident. And I sit right underneath him. And we also have this shown where we have a public information officer. It's our lead. That's with Amy Snow Buckner. And then we have a special partner who looks on internal communication. And then moving on down, we have a liaison officer, Karen Farrak, who's really been a great resource in regards to liaising with our state and federal partners into understanding all of the different executive orders and policy changes that have come out from the state and federal government. And there'll be a lot of discussion on that later on in this presentation. And also, we have our safety officer, Craig Colson, who is in risk management on a day-to-day effort, and really just looking out for the safety of everyone in regards to our staff that's working together in the EOC, and then also just how we are properly providing our essential services and keeping everyone safe. Under operations, this is really focused under the different operations that, for our essential services that we have identified, between our public safety, our public works branches, our traffic and mobile GR, of course, our special events. And then we have human services listed at the bottom, and Connie Bohatch has been identified for that, to really have that connection with the Health Department in regards to any of our human services needs in regards to homeless, population shelters, and things like that. Also with the public section chief, this is really our planning, or excuse me, our planning section chief. And we have Becky Jo Glover and some of her staff under that. And planning is really the force when it comes to any documentation, any of our lead discussions, and really is really what put together this presentation today. So they're really the ones that are taking the information, putting it all into a document, having that situation awareness, sharing information out to others, and then also tracking any resources. And anytime we talk about resources, that's really focused on people and things. So that's kind of, that is definitely a focus of our planning section. Moving over to the logistics section chief, logistics is really that section that is going out and getting our things, getting items for us. And so they have been working extremely hard on the personal protective equipment, PPE, that has obviously been a hot topic throughout this pandemic. But under that, we also have focus on facilities, making sure our facilities that are owned by the city are protected, and then also helping us identify any other facilities that we may need to use for a variety of other things during our response. And then also with IT as well, making sure that Doug Starr and his team are really making sure we can do things virtually. That's been a very unique thing with this operation, is everything's been virtual. Our emergency operations center has been working in a virtual capacity of using Skype and other ways of being able to coordinate and to respond to this incident. And then over here, over to the right, we have finance and admin. On any disaster, it's very important to track any of our procurement items that we're procuring, any costs of items that we are looking to purchase, any expenditures we've made, and then also any of our HR changes for human resources have also been coordinated under the finance and admin section. And again, this is a very different type of event. We've had so many different policy changes that have really impacted how we handle human resources. And again, this will be all explained out in more detail here in a little bit. And then we've also identified that we needed to add a recovery section chief. We are in response mode, but again, it's a best practice to start thinking, discussing, and planning for recovery while you are in response. And so that's why we have identified a recovery section chief, or chiefs, actually, and then a team that started to work together in regards to what recovery may look like for this. And then also, you will see there that in the green box, we have shown where we have direct coordination with the Kent County Health Department's Emergency Operations Center. And that really just shows how we are talking on a dated, on a daily basis, sharing information, and trying to coordinate and collaborate the best that we possibly can in regards to this pandemic. All right, next slide. All right, so here is a, we have some data. We'll go through the next three slides, looking at really kind of the today's information that we have as regards to COVID-19 data. Please note that anytime you look at any case numbers or how it's really impacting us as a country, or the state and Kent County and Grand Rapids area, this information is definitely changing hour by hour and day by day. So as of this morning, we are up at a total of over 367,000 cases in the United States. And we also sit at 10,955 deaths in the country. But also, you can see here that we have known 19,814 recovered cases in the whole United States. And so this really gives a good visual of what the impact looks like as a nation. And then also, the charts below can see how, as we've gone through time over the last month, really kind of seeing how these cases, case numbers have spiked. And same thing with our daily death numbers have spiked as well. And so there's a lot of discussion on when the peak is going to be in regards as a country, as states. But this is really interesting to see just how we are being impacted as a country. You can move on to the next slide, please. So as the state of Michigan goes, as of this morning, we have, we have a confirmed 17,221 cases and 727 deaths. Majority of these cases are sitting in the eastern part of Michigan. And over the last 24 hours, there has been a confirmed 1,503 cases. So that's actually stayed level over the last five days, where we've been sitting between 1,200 to 1,500 cases per day. So we're seeing a kind of a balance in that perspective as far as the daily confirmed cases. So we're seeing a kind of a balance in that perspective as far as the daily confirmed cases. In the last twenty-four hours, according to this information from the state, we increased our death number for, as a state of Michigan, by a hundred and ten deaths. You can go ahead to the next slide, please. As for Kent County, Kent County Health Department is doing a wonderful job in displaying the data information for, that's impacting the whole county, and which does include the city of Grand Rapids. So as of last night, we have, the county has submitted five hundred and ninety-five tests. We currently still have about a hundred tests pending, but out of those, we have a hundred and seventy-seven presumptive positive tests. Anytime you see that word presumptive, it means that the test says it is a positive, and then they send it up to the CDC to be confirmed. So right now, we, there is, we sit at a hundred and seventy-seven potential positive tests in cases in the county and the city. Again, looking at what those numbers look like when, when how many tests are submitted, we see that we've had three hundred and eighteen negative cases out of those five hundred and ninety-five tests that have been submitted. And as of last night, we do, we have had five deaths that have occurred in the county and the city. So this information is usually updated on the Kent County's, Kent County Health Department's website around midday, so around two, three o'clock. They have been taking the day's information and adding and, and updating that information every day. And that's pretty much where we stand when it comes to our COVID nineteen cases. And I'll turn it back over to city manager, Mark Washington.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Farol. So, and, and we have gotten questions about the, the impact among our community in terms of how many people live within city based on county data, whether the race, ethnicity, the demographics, is it impacting one group more than another? And we have asked the county for that population health data, those demographics, and I think they are working on that information. We've gotten some preliminary, but certainly I, I lean to them, look to them to give us the, the outcome of those, those impacts and any other social, social health determinants. Let's go to the next section, please. So, so now we'll talk a little bit about response, what are we doing regarding city operations? And if you go to the next slide, I'll just be very, very clear with, with my expectations around two things. One, any, any effort that we have, we have to maintain those continuity of essential services. And so you'll see the various administrative orders here that I have signed off, at least five since the declaration that identifies where we should provide those essential services, what should we scale back or modify, how should we be flexible with our workforce, allowing people to work, to telecommute, work from home when possible, being extremely generous with leave, making sure we're compliant with the new laws that have come, both from federal and state orders, as well as making sure that when we have employees re-entering into the workplace, that they are safe and are able to do so without infecting other employees. And, and as we, we, you'll hear more, and we talked about earlier, and making sure that when employees do come to work, not only are they safe, have the appropriate social distance, but also making sure that we have the appropriate protective equipment. I have made it very clear to department directors to not allow employees to work in an unsafe manner, whether it is having multiple employees in one vehicle, that there should only be one department that does that. And that's the fire department, every other department, with the exception of police, when they're transporting someone, should only have single occupants in a vehicle. Or making sure that we have appropriate social distance, both behind areas that are not open to the public, but particularly when we're in places that are the public exposed. And you'll hear more about some of the things that we've done to affect the central city services, but also how safely employees work in the workplace. And I have made it crystal clear to our managers that our community and their families are dependent on them making sure that we provide a safe working condition for our employees, and our employees are to be commended for bravely, those who are unable to, who are able to, unable to telecommute or required to come on site to provide those essential services, along with some of the other medical responders in our medical community. They're, they're very brave to serve the public, and the public should appreciate and really celebrate all of the public servants and medical responders, first responders, as modern-day heroes. So my appreciation's to, to all of them, and I'm so proud to serve with them here in this community. So we'll move on to the next operational update on response. And we're going to ask, because we're, we're not in a commission chamber where we can toggle people back and forth and have visuals on each other, we're going to ask our planning chief, Ms. Becky Jo Glover, to give an overview of some of the operations as it relates to response. And then we'll have staff on the end, at the end of the presentation, our police chief, fire chief, parks director, all of our, all of our managing directors and directors available for any responses to questions that you might have. Ms. Glover?
Thank you, city manager, Washington. We're going to go over several different areas today, so I'm going to just state the point. So we have, we're going to start with communications and our public information officer. And we have been very succinct and very intentional about ensuring that we have both external and internal communications going on. For external to our community, of course, we have outreach that's both in English and Spanish, releases interviews and frequently asked questions. Our community outreach, whether it's through emails or social media or frequently asked questions, we have that in English and Spanish, very important to serve our community. We have video messaging going on that's both in English and Spanish and host app, as well as on our website at grandrapidsmi.gov. We've got a hub where all the different information related to city, other, and businesses can be found. Also, the three-one-one center has been working with the communications PIO to ensure that they have our, what's going on daily from people calling in as well as emails, so we can continue our messaging in the way that's necessary to keep everyone up to date. What's extremely important to us is the internal communications that are taking place with our staff. We have put together a one-stop digital workplace that's now available, an information hub where all the information that an employee could have at their fingertips can find. But on there, you'll see video messaging, as well as today, we launched a Q and A blog where employees can ask questions and get the answers back, because a lot of times, they're out working and they're doing these other things, so they don't have time to look through all the exhaustive information, but we are there for them as well. We also implemented for today, a phone line, a hotline, we'll call it, that allows them to call in and get daily messages and updates through our internal PIO. Next slide, please. What's really important is that we also make sure our, our community understands the different ways that they can engage with us and that they can find information. We, of course, know that there's two-one-one, which are the numbers on the screen for everyone, and as well as a website, but they're really about community and social services, that food and shelter, bill pay assist, some cybercrime, but really, right now, people are calling about the unemployment, they're talking about food, shelter, where can we get food? So two-on-one is your resource. When we talk about in an action item for government services, that you might, the trash recycling, the city paying bills and so forth, that you have services that we provide, you would call three-one-one or the ten-digit number. And of course, as I said before, we've got a lot of information for those that like to engage with us digitally on the website, available to you. At the end of the day, you have an emergency, police, fire, or paramedics, you dial nine-one-one. So again, the three numbers, just very easy to remember, two-one-one, three-one-one, and nine-one-one. And also, of course, we have ways that you can engage with us through social media, which Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and of course, Nextdoor. Next slide. What I'm going to be doing now is going through the different operational areas, and so we'll start with police. And just to give you an update, we've been working with altered police, twelve-hour shifts, then they have fourteen days off to stop that spread of COVID nineteen by having, putting these workforce days around that. All members of the patrol staff and members of police department have N ninety-five masks, eye protection, latex gloves, you'll hear several times, personal protective equipment, PPE. These are screened, we're using these too when we're screening, and we're also using social distancing as a very tactical and intentional manner of decision when approaching complainants, victims, or witnesses. And we're also, of course, using our phones, cellphones to interview complainants to ensure that we're following those rules around social distancing and keeping the safety and the health of our community at the most highest level. There are mandatory health screenings being done, that where employees walk in, their temperature, they're checked, there's a checklist that the fire department has established that we go through at several of our departments, three-one-one, nine-one-one, the police department and fire department and several others, that they follow this protocol, and to ensure that we're keeping our employees safe and anyone that might be interacting with us, and of course, social distancing. We have very, we've limited the access of coming into the lobby, into the building, but we're using the intercom system at the police department. And in a moment, you'll hear more about the dedicated homeless outreach officer, and we'll talk more about that. Next slide, please. For our fire department, we have joined together, the fire and the police units have joined together to support any shelter communication needs or homeless interactions that require any kind of intervention. We've been assisting with logistics and procurement, working with logistics branch, Mr. Reber, and with Chief Lehman, of course, to ensure that we can procure these personal protective equipment, PPE, and it's available to us. So those two groups have been working together. Also, the fire department has working, been working with homeless sheltering, density reduction, and inspections around alternate care facilities that might have to be implemented as we go through this COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. Wanted to share with you some statistics from nine-one-one, and you can see that through April fourth, we've had approximately four hundred and four COVID, possible COVID-related incidents. And you can see the breakdown by nine-one-one incidents, which is fifty-two possibly COVID-related, and then the GRFD, the fire department's, three hundred and fifty-two. So we want to make sure that we continue to give you these updates on information and data. Next slide, please. Real quick on the three-one-one side, we are, as of yesterday, through when we started our EOC activation, level two, we've had fourteen thousand plus interactions. Originally, yesterday, we were seeing a six percent decrease. Over the last two days, we're starting to see an actual equal to the number of calls we were getting at three-one-one, to include even walk-ins. So more and more people are becoming engaged with contacting us. Of those calls that we took, thirty-one hundred were what we consider COVID-related inquiries, which could be around water shut-off, of course, transportation, how do we pay my bill, because we're in a different situation now where people may be not having the, working, and so they'll need some more information. We have updated our scripts because a lot of people are calling here because of the food security, where do I get food, the food sites? So rather than transferring those calls over to two-one-one, we are using the same resources that two-one-one is using. And then, of course, for those social services issues such as cybersecurity and/or other issues, we do transfer to our partners over at two-one-one. And if you remember, two-one-one, three-one-one, nine-one-one, three very easy numbers to remember. One of the other things that we've implemented with the partners with police, fire, three-one-one, and co-compliance, is that stay home, stay safe reports. And so the public is able to call us at three-one-one and/or after hours, police non-emergency, police non-emergency for these type of reports, and that's four-five-six-three-four-zero-zero. And what these complaints are, is per the executive order at the state level from the governor, we've put into place, working with those groups as well as the attorney's office, what to report, so we can have co-compliance actually work on these cases, contact these businesses, talk to them, educate them, do some outreach. And what we've been able to do is, we have had great success, actually a hundred percent at this point, being able to communicate with those businesses and also with those individuals that we've had the information on, to be able to make sure they understand what the rules are. I can say right now that we have not sent any of them over to the police department for any enforcement, so we're very pleased with that, because the education outreach really does work. This past weekend, you're going to hear more about this from Chief Lehman, we did implement also a crew on the ground with police and fire, and also receiving some of these complaints, working in some specific areas as well, checking out the reports that they've been given. Next slide. So human services is going to go very quickly over this. You heard that Ms. Bohatch is overseeing this branch in our, under our operations section. And what we do here is where she's talking to and working with the homeless service coordination, and of course, whole issue to end homelessness. And what we're doing is, twice a week, she's meeting with them about shelters and housing service providers, discussing operations, those protocols that are being followed, and then also partnering with the health department and the city to ensure that we have the most up-to-date information. She also coordinates agency information around PPE, protective equipment, and supplies for Kent, through the Kent County EOC. Could be shelter and isolation, could be, the Maltrader ministries have done some areas, so there's, they're practicing the social distancing, six feet apart from each other. Guiding Light Ministries has been instrumental in operational and isolation facility for our singles, as well as United Way is supporting funding and securing ten housing units for five single families and five hotels, and this is for isolation for families. If you go to the next slide, please. Also, as I told you, we have a new fire and police homeless street outreach team that's working with the homeless, as well as any reports they may get from our area and police non-emergency, but really, they're the people on the ground, working over the weekends and after hours to work with and help and assist and educate as well. We also have food access coordination with the Kent County Essential Needs Task Force. And again, Ms. Bohatch is having meetings, calls, as well as where are these, and updating everyone with these pantries and where these food sites are. We are also coordinating all the communication, especially for the website and for two-one-one and three-one-one for location changes and hours, which we know that that's a moving type of place in this, when you have this, because so many people are assisting and wanting to help our community, of course. And she's also going to be facilitating, and has been facilitating, communication amongst agencies for needs of foods and supplies, and including corporate donations. So next slide, please. So now we're going to start on the operations of the city, and you're going to see, I just want to point out a couple of things. After you'll see department's name, you'll see in parentheses, the name, the word rotation. And what that means is that one of our section unit leads, Mr. Hurt, has worked on with all of the operational departments, a way to be able to stop the spread of COVID by having rotations available to our staff. So you have people that are on for one week and then off, but on call in case we need that. But what you're doing is, you're actually impacting how that it might be spread, and you're not having everyone working. And so we're trying to really look at the public's health, but also, more importantly, the health and safety and well-being of our employees. So let's quickly go over parks, rotation. Always, the parks are focusing on the need to balance the residents' physical and mental health and well-being during this time. A lot of people might get a little bit of cabin fever, but we have these options available to them. They're always, the Parks Department is always following the federal and state and local operations and what they're doing to also ensure that the public's health is taken care of. And parks have started today posting warnings, closures, and restricted area access to the following Grand Rapids parks and recreation amenities. And you, I'm not going to go all over them, but at the end of this, if you do have any questions, of course, our director will be on the line to answer those. Next slide, please. Mobile GR, of course, dash services, you've heard, are suspended, and we're running rapid at a much reduced service. They are practicing social distancing in their vehicles. Meter parking and enforcement, as well as parking zones in the residential areas, that has been suspended, and we've shifted our focus to ensure that the safety is being looked at and maintained. And the last thing is that, one of the big things that they just recently implemented was the fifteen-minute parking zone. We know that we're asking if you have the opportunity to, to use our local restaurants to, when you can, and by having these for the different agencies that have delivery, delivery out there, they're able to park, go into the establishment, come back out, and get in their cars and leave. So we appreciate that, and they're adding more locations as they are identified. Under the water, we've, of course, are following rotation both at Mobile GR and with water. All cutoffs have been suspended and the late fees for non-payment as well through April thirtieth. We have restored water service to everyone that was turned off, except eight that said they didn't want it turned on because of construction and things. We're very proud of that, and to ensure that our, the health and safety of our community is available through that water and essential services. Also, the water department, as well as EST in just a moment, are maintaining operational service in accordance with the federal and regular regulations and rules, and so several of our departments have those rules that they have to adhere to, and that is being followed during this time and continue to be followed. Co-compliance, they're on a rotation as well. They continue to, any hazardous issues, to be able to look at those complaints internally inside a property when we have identified their hazard. They do go in there with the proper protective equipment, and we are doing some very, very limited crash reduction programs, when we're starting to see- limited trash reduction programs when we're starting to see some accumulation of trash around some business properties and/or personal property. And again, as I've said, co-compliance is that first level for our stay home, stay healthy, um, stay safe partnership. Uh, we at three one one and police non-emergency take these calls. We have a digital form, it goes over to co-compliance, they have all the information. They reach out, they talk to these businesses as well as individuals as needed and just educate them. So it's been a very, very um, good partnership and it's been working really great. Thank you. Next slide, please. Special events, as you know, all special events scheduled through April thirteenth have been canceled, rescheduled or postponed. And the special events team is supplying tents and crowd control fencing stations and those items, tables and chairs for our partners at Cherry Health, heart of the city center at Cherry Health and the South Side Health Center. Another way to give back to our community and ensure they have what they need as well to go through this. And one of the other things the city has just been starting to talk about is to try and come up with challenges now that people are in their homes so much. What can we do to light up the city and, and make that proud and to say, we're here together, stay home challenge, stay safe? And they've started just to uh, take a look at that and are working on that and to include some of the Blue Bridge lighting up. Environmental services, of course, another department that's on rotation, they're doing everything to make sure the laboratory is making and packaging their own disinfectant wipes, per the CDC guidance, with the bleach concentration. So we're very proud of our lab over there. We are actually using some of that in, in many of our operations. Uh, again, one of those organizations that are maintaining operations as well as um, anything to do with regulations at the state level and the federal level and the local level, they are following. The Department of Public Works is also under rotation. Um, they have suspended all crews performing non-emergency work such as concrete and trench repairs, but most of the operations, the other operations do continue, such as trash recycling, fall pickup and yesterday curbside waste pickup started. And then next Monday, we're still discussing, of course, it's been scheduled for our city site to yard waste dumping. Next slide, please. Facilities, now we're going into our logistics branch, which is under Mr. Reber. And Mr. Reber is handling these three things and you'll see again, rotation again, under these. The facilities is, department is ready and needed, as needed, to deliver any vehicles or equipment for any of our services that are needed in any department. Um, they have maintained operations, they're still at the level, there's no issues at this point. And as needed, they're able to support any normal operation and also ready in case there's any emergencies. We have an IT, the IT is under this and we've, we have remained very structurally safe. Um, we've made several accommodations uh, to ensure that our staff can telework, being safe, of course, and healthy and staying home. And your experience today, the Webex meeting that was set up in conjunction with the clerk's office with our IT branch unit leader. Our supplies division, which is also in rotations, it works with all the suppliers, including the state emergency operations center, to make sure we're, we're procuring what we need to ensure for the PPEs as we go through this process. There is a shortage of PPE equipment nationwide and that's why this unit is very intentional about monitoring the use, but as well as ensuring that everyone that needs that is following and can get access to this personal protective equipment here in the city. Um, currently, we have enough to meet our needs, but of course, we just want to put on the record that this is a critical issue and remains, uh, the availability of PPE remains a critical issue on our, our radar. Next slide, please. So Ms. Clarence is under our, our chief for the finance and administration section and she's been instrumental working with HR to get the MOUs in place so we can have some shift rotation, differently benefit options, emergency family medical leave act, um, response and questions, frequently asked questions to our staff. Uh, this unit has made sure that employees know what those requirements are for PPE, when you're working in the public and/or even in the building and when you're going from your car and so forth, to ensure, again, the health and safety and wellbeing of our employees. Currently, right now, the key workforce highlights are forty percent of our staff are teleworking. We have redeployed staff from multiple departments. You heard about slight, about the rotating shifts, so we've got that going. And our talent pool of employees that are waiting to step up and to do additional work outside their normal scope of duties. And one of the things that's happening under this unit is that they are tracking the illnesses of city employees just to mitigate the outbreaks should we have a delivery, an issue and we can't deliver essential services, we can bring other people in through that rotation schedule that you heard of, um, about. Next slide, please. So as you know, the AP and payroll and procurement area, the city manager has special emergency purchasing authority. And we have been able to leverage many of our procurement master agreements to be able to secure some of the equipment that we need. And also in our CGI system, uh, Ms. Clarence and her staff has set up some coding to be able to track labor and non-labor expenses that have to do with teleworking as well as our PPE and so forth, and that's been implemented. We've also have a, signed a new person to work on the possibility of grants that are going on. So they just um, joined our unit this week under the finance and administration. The budget is still on schedule to go on fiscal plan presentation for April twenty-eighth and economic recovery efforts are being discussed and, discussed and looked at at this point. What we do want to make sure that you understand is that we've had to engage and with deep consideration, um, our city attorney's office and staff, because a lot of the things that are coming down from, whether it be the federal level, the state level, are very complex and this group has to often work with them on getting legal interpretations required of the federal, state and local laws. So we want to make sure that you understand they are continually engaged with us constantly and work as hard and as much to ensure that those frequently asked questions for our staff, that we can educate them as well as to ensure that what's been made available to them is easy and accessible. Thank you. Next slide. So the last area we're going to go over is HR and safety. As you know, Craig Colson is our safety uh, person for, on our EOC chart of organization chart. And um, he's been leading us in the PPE, personal protective equipment area. And on, of course, April third, the manager issued an administrative order that talks about how we as staff, public face as well as non-public facing workforce, that assessment and what are we doing to ensure we're taken care of and we're, we're also acting on social distancing and to ensure that every work site, whether it is public facing or non-public facing, has this PPE to be able to ensure their health and wellbeing. So we've got another administrative order that you heard the manager briefly talk about, which was, how do you come, how do you report to work? And then how do you report to work after you've possibly been um, exposed to COVID-19? And that went into place, we have a frequently asked question on our digital workplace as well as, of course, the blog that went today, some people are already questions, asking questions around that. So the workers disability compensation emergency rules, um, there is a presumption that a first response employee suffering a personal injury resulting in a diagnosis of COVID-19, whether by a physician or positive test, will be considered as workers disability compensation under the emergency rules. Next slide, please. And now I'm going to turn it over back to city manager.
Thank you, Ms. Glover, for, for that review. So as you can see, um, there are a lot of things that uh, require uh, our attention to maintain our basic, our essential operations uh, to the public. Uh, but a, as we um, began to look outward to the community to uh, have some type of restoration to normalcy, uh, some of, some of our community members, whether individually or businesses or corporations, um, have already began looking for individual as well as corporate assistance. And so what we like to do now is to begin um, shifting the briefing to uh, both short-term and long-term recovery. And uh, this is, this is uh, quite a complicated area because there are a lot of people who are um, helping and responding, rapidly responding, whether it's on the federal level, the state level or even the local level. And uh, what we have tried to do, next slide, uh, please, is to make sure that um, we are not confusing the public, that we're aligning with uh, many of the efforts that are underway. And uh, you heard the news release uh, about a week ago or so ago, that the private public partnership with um, experienced Grand Rapids, the chamber in the right place convening a group of us, community stakeholders, call a coalition of stakeholders, and you see the list of diverse stakeholders there, uh, to make sure that we can communicate as one voice around the various resources uh, that are available both to individuals as well as uh, small businesses and corporations. And they have been doing a great job in, in doing that. Um, next slide. But there's also efforts that uh, we can do here uh, locally, publicly, and you, you've seen some cities that have announced uh, local recovery funding and, and whether that is to match funding from federal or state funding or to match funding from philanthropy or to have their own localized uh, uh, efforts that may be existing programs that they were already doing and they were just expanding the resources devoted to them. Or it may be new programs that may be gap programming for people who otherwise would not qualify from federal or state resources. And so we're trying to be very, very deliberate about how we as a city can complement and support the efforts, recovery efforts that have already been initiated at the federal level, the state level, as well as other efforts in the local level without being duplicative or without further confusing the public. And I will say that there, there are some cities that have announced a funding, uh, but those, those programs have not been defined yet. They are, they have just allocated, set monies aside and, and they are going to see how those monies will uh, either be supported, um, or supplement rather, the, the federal and state efforts, or i- it may be programmed differently based on local needs. We have that opportunity to be very, very deliberate in setting aside local funding. We have, a, as you heard, uh, Ms. Glover said before, our budget, uh, we're poised to, to present the budget um, on April twenty-eighth. And instead of just picking a number, uh, I want to make sure that as we, if we don't get additional supplementation for this local funding, whatever local funding we set aside, uh, will have to be diverted from other purposes. So we have to balance this, this need and be very, very deliberate and intentional to make sure we don't create a funding resource and defund other essential programs or cause further financial risk, uh, because the impact of the economic certainty is still unknown. And we have been um, trying to estimate what our impact on the local economy will be, particularly for this last quarter of our fiscal year that ends at the end of June. And um, we have various numbers about revenue shortfall. Uh, and we'll be talking more about that in detail either next week or definitely on the twenty-eighth. But I wanted, I wanted you and the public to understand that we have, we have every intention to have skin in the game, uh, in terms of uh, local efforts and that might be the expansion of current programming that we have for business assistance. Or I've already been approached by several other groups in the nonprofit and philanthropic area, asking the city to make contributions to some of the other local funds that are being created. And so, so what we wanted to accomplish in this section is to uh, give you and the public a good understanding of the current state. What are those resources that are already out there and with the federal, state level that we still have yet determined how it actually makes its way, its way back to Grand Rapids? And then uh, we'll talk about uh, the local recovery consideration strategies that we have uh, um, been deliberate in, in creating with our recovery unit in our EOC. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our um, legislative affairs, um, expert, Ms. Karen Ferret, she should be on the line. And there is a document, we're going to switch from the PowerPoint presentation, there's a document that's a handout, uh, that kind of talks about the federal, state recovery assistance uh, information as well as our local recovery efforts and we'll use that for the, to brief this portion. Ms. Ferret?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I'm going to start with um, giving you some information about a few of the um, executive orders that have been issued by the governor. She has issued over thirty executive orders, beginning with EO twenty twenty dash four, which declared a state of emergency on March tenth. This order was um, amended and EO twenty twenty thirty-three declared a state of disaster for Michigan on April first. Um, she also issued the stay home, stay safe order, um, executive order twenty twenty dash twenty-one, which requires all Michiganders to stay in their homes and all business and operations must temporarily suspend in-person operations that are not necessary to sustain or protect life. Temporary closure um, for places of public accommodation, including restaurants, bars and entertainment venues was EO twenty twenty dash twenty. And the temporary prohibition on large assemblages or events was twenty twenty dash eleven. And both of those correspond with the stay home, stay safe order. She also suspended in-person K through twelve education for the remainder of the twenty nineteen twenty school year in twenty twenty dash thirty-five. And schools will provide, um, I'm sorry, as part of that exo, executive order, schools will provide remote learning, seniors will graduate and most students will advance to the next grade. Teachers and school staff will be paid, schools will receive full funding and third grade reading law um, will not be enforced this year, as well as free lunches will continue to be provided through the end of the school calendar year. Um, executive orders and any corresponding FAQs that have been issued by the governor's office are accessible um, through this document that's, that you're looking at, um, and, and hyperlinked. Um, these are just a few of the orders um, that um, she has issued. So I just wanted to be sure to note that there have been quite a few. Moving on to some of the um, assistance that's available, um, and has been made available as a result of executive action and state and federal action. Um, in the unemployment insurance agency, uh, claims are up over four thousand percent with three hundred and three thousand Michiganders filing last week alone. Um, it was also noted that in the last two weeks, there were more claims filed than all of twenty nineteen in total. Um, the governor has expended, expanded eligibility to the following, first responders, workers, which includes workers who are sick, quarantined, immunocompromised or family, have family care responsibility, including children who can't go to school, self-employed workers, independent contractors, low-wage workers and those with a limited work history. Um, the governor has stated that every employee in Michigan who applies for unemployment benefits will receive them if eligible. She understands that the system is um, overburdened right now and that people are having some difficulty getting through, whether it be over the phone or online. Um, but she is um, doing everything she can to get enough people there to be able to respond um, to those claim filings and wanted um, everyone to know that impacted employees have twenty-eight days from the date of their work stoppage to apply for benefits. And approved claims will be backdated to reflect the date in which the claimant was laid off or let go from their job due to COVID-19. Benefits have also been expanded to thirty-nine weeks and in-person registration and work search requirements are suspended right now. So I've also provided some information on the online filing schedule as well as the call center filing schedule. Um, and so that is available here as well as a fact sheet that can be accessed and the website, um, www.michigan.gov uh, backslash UIA, where you can go to file a claim. In terms of public assistance, um, and to food assistance specifically, all eligible households will receive the maximum monthly benefit for the months of March and April. And eligible families do not need to reapply to receive those additional benefits and those should have uh, begun to um, be received as of March thirtieth. Below is um, the max, maximum allowable benefit based on a household size, starting with the average family of three, um, would receive five hundred and nine dollars and going all the way up through eight people, which would be one thousand one hundred and sixty-four. Twenty-seven thousand individuals will be temporarily exempt from the federal work requirements. Um, and individuals who are applying for or receiving public assistance benefits, as is the normal case, should continue to use www.michigan.gov backslash, X slash, my bridges, M-I bridges, um, and the link is available. Um, in individuals unable to use my bridges can call uh, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services offices or a toll-free number eight 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 six seven eight eight nine one four to get assistance. Customer service is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Spanish and Arabic service is available. And if you are deaf, deaf-blind or hard of hearing or speech impaired, you can call the Michigan Relay Center at seven one one. Um, individual workers will schedule in-person meetings only as needed as the office lobbies are um, currently closed. In terms of small business and employer assistance, um, there are a few programs there are a few programs and incentives that have been made available, including the Paycheck Protection Program Loans, which is 100% federally guaranteed loans to employers who maintain payroll throughout COVID-19. This is a forgiveness of up to eight weeks of payroll based on employee retention and salary levels, no small business administration fees, and at least six months of deferral with maximum deferrals of up to a year. Small businesses and other eligible entities will be able to apply if they were harmed by COVID-19 between February 15th and June 30th of this year. The program would be retroactive to February 15th in order to help bring workers who may have already been laid off back onto the payrolls. There is also the Economic Injury Disaster Loans and Emergency Economic Injury Grants. And these grants would provide an emergency advance of up to $10,000 to small businesses and private nonprofits that are harmed by COVID-19. And there is more information and a link that you can click to find out more information about that program. There are also some small business tax provisions, including an employee retention credit and a delay of payment of employer payroll taxes. Both of those programs are not provided to employers receiving assistance through the Paycheck Protection Program. The federal stimulus funding and response to COVID-19 has been pretty extensive over the last month. And there have been three federal stimulus packages that have gone through. The first one on March 6th was the Coronavirus Preparedness and Response Supplemental Appropriations Act, which provided at least $8 billion for public health and at least just over $1 billion for state and local governments. On March 18th, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act was signed into law, which provided increased Medicaid match rates, enhanced nutrition assistance, and some of the food assistance that I've already mentioned, unemployment insurance, paid sick and family leave, and diagnostic testing coverage. And then on March 27th, the CARES Act was signed into law, providing approximately $2 trillion for state and local grant programs, relief for state and local governments, stimulus checks, unemployment insurance enhancements, and assistance for businesses. As part of that, there were payments for state, local, and tribal governments of $150 billion that will be allocated proportionately based on state populations. The Michigan share is set at just under $4 billion, 3.873 billion. And the local share to Kent County is $114 million. Current guidance from the Department of Treasury indicates that these funds cannot be used to backfill state and local revenue losses, but the city continues to advocate for relaxation of the expenditure restrictions included for these funds. There are also a list of many other things that were funded in the CARES Act, including for housing-related programs, the city of Grand Rapids was awarded just over $2.2 million in CDBG funding, as well as just over $1.1 million in emergency solutions grants. Congress is already working on Phase IV, the federal stimulus response. And Speaker Pelosi and Democrats' top priorities are said to be more cash to state and local governments, education funding, housing, healthcare worker protection, pension protections, increasing food assistance benefits, free testing and doctor's visits, and more money for Americans on top of the $1,200 from the Phase III stimulus funding. Originally, they were looking at infrastructure as well, as noted in this memo, but it sounds like they are looking to deal with that separately at this point. In terms of the state funding and response, the legislature passed and the governor signed Public Acts 66 and 67 of 2020 to provide supplemental funding in the current year budget and over $150 million for the state's COVID-19 response. Nearly $80 million that had originally been appropriated in those acts or in those bills, I should say, prior to the COVID-19 crisis were vetoed by the governor in a joint agreement with the majority and minority leaders of the House and Senate. And the following, there is a summary provided of some of the things that were funded, including $25 million in funding for COVID-19 response efforts. And just finally, one last thing that's not included on here, but I have just been made aware that the House and Senate have passed Senate Concurrent Resolution 24, which will extend the emergency and disaster declarations until April 30th. And so that action has been taken, which will allow the governor continued authority to issue executive orders in response to the emergency. And she is considering extending the stay-home order, but nothing has happened at this point. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ferick. We'll continue the last portion of the briefing now and discuss the local recovery considerations. And I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager Delong and Assistant City Manager Matthews to participate in this portion.
Thank you, Mark, and good afternoon, everybody. So our presentation's been dominated so far by talking about the response, but recovery is very important, too. We've been thinking about that all along as we go through this because really, every response to an emergency takes two forms. One is response, one is recovery. And the same is true in this case, but recovery looks a little bit different here because we're not cleaning up trees or trying to stop a flood. We're dealing with something much different. So we have an economy to restart, and we need to do that at the right time. So it's incumbent upon us to be prepared to work as hard on recovery as we have worked on response. And it's important to think past the current crisis that we're in while we're working on the recovery. So you can see that we believe that recovery takes two forms, both business recovery and community reactivation. Mark made a point of talking earlier about the broad coalition that's formed in the community around information. That includes Experience Grand Rapids, the Grand Rapids Chamber, The Right Place, and others who have put together the covidwestmichigan.org website. We're part of that coalition, along with a host of others that you can see named on the document. Please proceed. So in addition, the mayor and city manager convened a diverse group of community leaders to begin thinking broadly about how to reactivate the community. And this will take place once the pandemic has passed and once we get the all clear. So activation could take the form of community events. It could take the form of neighborhood celebrations. It could be a time to celebrate the reopening of the business district or districts. It could be something where we honor first responders and medical personnel for their many contributions during the pandemic. Activation could be large-scale, or it could be block by block. The focus is on reenergizing the rich civic life that we know is a key part of Grand Rapids and makes us special. In addition, the city managers established an economic recovery work group. And that section is within the Emergency Operations Center, which means that we're managing recovery investments through the EOC. He's appointed the Deputy City Manager, and Mr. Matthews, the Assistant City Manager, to head up that group. And the group is tasked with creating a fresh start by developing and delivering on the city's business recovery and community reactivation outcomes in a way that's consistent with the values of our strategic plan. So far, the work to date has included a variety of elements. We've communicated and collaborated with community economic development partners to develop and deliver information on state and federal assistance. We have communicated that information directly to businesses. So websites are great, but you have to know where they are to find them. So what we've done is direct connections with members of our corridor improvement authority districts, businesses within those districts, with contacts we have through our development centers. We've been doing direct mail and two, direct email. And two of those contacts have been, one was regarding consumer's energy information, another was on information on the Paycheck Protection and Disaster Loans available through the CARES Act. And those both went out last week. We've initiated development of the potential to advance brownfield reimbursement to help owners maintain or sustain projects. So that could take the form of advancing payments using the Brownfield Revolving Fund to have people, say, do rent forgiveness or also to help finance the projects. We've consulted with special counsel to aid in development of tools that we could use in our corridor improvement districts and also in our downtown development authority. And those opportunities that can proceed under the current statutory authority are being vetted now and will be rolled out when we have them ready. The group is also identifying concepts that would require amendments to state law. And those could be to the acts that have formed the corridor improvement authorities or the downtown development authority, or it could be other types of amendments that would help. We do intend to engage with the House and Senate as a forum, work groups around that. We're working to understand gaps in the CARES Act and also in state investment to determine how best to fill those voids. So as the city manager said earlier, we do not want to, we don't want to duplicate, we want to accelerate, we want to leverage. And so that means we have to figure out where the gaps are and fill them so we get a good, solid recovery. As Ms. Ferick mentioned, we have received $2.2 million in CDBG allocation. And we've also received $1.1 million in emergency solutions grant allocation as well. So in the CDBG area, that allows us to develop impactful business recovery and community reactivation outcomes in the general target area. And we're looking at a lot of ideas, which could include things like additional training for businesses, business owners, lease terms of support, could be microloans, could be used for leveraging and other funding. There are a variety of solutions that we're looking at for small business support. In terms of the ESG allocation, that's for business prevention, rapid rehousing, and perhaps short-term rent support. So things to keep people in their homes and to help them find housing in a rapid period of time. We're also working to understand how best to assist vulnerable communities with rent, homeownership supports, utilities, grants, and loans. We've had some experience with that for our water system. We are looking for ways to make an impact there. We're assembling research on local funds that have been established elsewhere in the state or in the nation. And we want to tailor the application to our own local setting. We're working to, on the Neighborhood Match Fund applications for the next round, which will happen in fiscal '21 and hopefully be issued shortly after the start of the fiscal year, to focus those more on resiliency and recovery. And we're focusing on events. So part of reactivation is getting people back out and having them celebrate the community that we love and to be engaged with each other and with that community. And so we're working to work with neighborhoods to have them develop special events that are for their neighborhood and help foster strong social infrastructure. And we're working to develop supports like waiving some fees and costs for a defined period of time. We've established, well, before I get to that, we're also monitoring the applications for MDC grant and loans that are being considered and will be awarded through The Right Place. They're managing the process for Kent County and will be allocating approximately $1 million to businesses, small businesses within the county. They receive many more applications than they can fulfill, and that's a fertile ground for us to work with. We want to also work on things we're learning through the pandemic. So we're learning a lot about a new and direct way to establish connections with people. And we want to benefit from that as we go forward. We've established something called the Grand Rapids Business Investment Team to assist businesses as they work to restart and move forward. And that, you can see the team members there will include Jennifer Closter as lead, Daryl Singleton, who is our business on buds person, Jessica Solis, who is familiar with all of our corridor improvement authorities, A.J. Hills, who is familiar with all of our MLBE companies, and also Richard Apt, who is our business advisor, so, and retail advisor. So that group will be working to connect directly with businesses. And businesses can connect with them by calling 311. And we have a process set up for direct referrals. And finally, we're working with staff to access Economic Development Administration grant investment. So the last grant that we received from the ADA was for improvements around the MFU Research Center at Michigan in Monroe. And these are grants for infrastructure, but I think, I know that they are loosening and broadening the types of projects that can be awarded. So we will compete for those. And I expect we will secure projects through the ADA. So the group is working to understand all the information that Karen provided to you and more. We're looking at best practices around the nation and in the state. And we're working to get this, get stuff on the ground here as rapidly as we can. And again, we want to make sure that anything we're doing are filling gaps and not duplicating existing programs. So there'll be pilots, there'll be adaptations, and there'll be course corrections as we move forward. And just to remind everybody that the new Grand Rapids Business Investment Team can be contacted by calling 311 and asking to be connected to a team member. And that process is in place now. So with that, I'll turn it back to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Delong. So we go back to the PowerPoint presentation. You can see there's quite a bit to digest. And so I just will summarize with, first of all, my thanks and appreciation again to all the staff for the outstanding work that they've done and just high-level other emergency issues as we continue to manage this. Now, what we've heard is to the end of the month, the purchasing authority that the commission has given me has proven to be valuable. But there may be occasions where we run into where we need more authority than what has been granted, and we'll be looking at that. And if that continues to be the case, then we may bring back an item on the meeting on the 28th. I've also had discussions with members of the community as the schools have officially closed for the rest of the year and how specifically we've been in contact with GRPS as well as others from the tech community and philanthropic community about making sure that we can enable that kind of learning in Grand Rapids and make sure that our kids have the appropriate equipment as well as access to technology and Wi-Fi from their homes. We've also talked about making sure that we bridge the digital divide by looking at places where we know that they may not have immediate access to technology and having more public Wi-Fi, whether that is activating more areas around the schools, parks, or libraries, public spaces, plazas, et cetera. But we know the primary focus now is educational component for students. But it seems to be that our entire commerce, our entire consumption, consumerism, is moving more to electronic and online. And so we'll have to figure out how to help people to engage more, particularly elderly communities. We've also, as I mentioned earlier, talked about the potential local recovery fund and taking some of that CDBG program and that ESG funding. And this is different from what you'll hear next week with our annual allocation. This is specifically, the over $3 million is specifically for the response related to COVID and how we might want to supplement that or with additional general funds or other kind of programming. And so we will be having more intentional discussions around that. There are recommendations that are being formulated as we speak. Again, our values don't change, neither does our mission and our priorities, and one of them is equity. And we want to make sure we understand equitable outcomes. I will go back to a report that you heard earlier out of the EOC about the six deaths. Those are countywide, not all in the city of Grand Rapids. And people have been asking, is there disparate outcomes like they're seeing in other areas across the country? And we continue to evaluate the impact on the community. As I mentioned earlier, we're working with the Health Department, but also the ability to help businesses that need it the most. And there's a balance because this is a pandemic incident, and it affected not only new restaurants or minority-owned restaurants, it affected every restaurant, every hotel, every bar. Now, the impact will vary, obviously. Now, the impact will vary, obviously, but we're trying to balance the need to be equitable, but also in terms of helping people who have been disadvantaged in the past, but also be equitable in the sense that we know every resident needs help and some need it more than others. And so we'll continue to use that lens as we go through some of the options. The other issue that we're looking at, as City Manager, Deputy City Manager mentioned earlier, is not only what revenue that we can create in some of these funds, but also what fees potentially as the restart of our economy occurs and whether that's a reduction in parking fees. Now, we have to make sure we have enough revenue to maintain the basic minimum service parking operations or looking at event fees, our refuse rates, seeing if there could be some type of alleviation of some of the fees or rates as we make it easier for businesses to sustain themselves or to restart. And so we will, I know this is a lot of information, but partly the reason why we want to do it today, because we didn't want to take this much time when we have a very full agenda next week and also to get some reaction or feedback to some of the things we briefed on. So I will pause at this point, and I think, Mr. Our city clerk, how would you like to facilitate the questions from the commission?
Yeah, I think first, Santi, or Mr. King, can stop sharing his screen. That will be beneficial. Thank you for him for participating or providing that service. I think we'll kind of maybe, have you, I guess, as commissioners have questions, they can unmute themselves and go with that. Just try not to talk over each other. If one starts, just, I guess, be patient and thank you, everybody, for your grace as we are in uncharted territories here. So I guess that's probably the best way to go.
All right, we'll start with the mayor. All right. Mayor, your mic, you still don't mute, Mayor?
All right, how's that?
Oh, we can hear you now.
Okay, great, thanks. You know, I have a lot of different questions, and I wouldn't say they're... I guess one that I'll throw out, I won't rethrow them, just give the rest of the commission an opportunity. Can you elaborate a little bit on the benefits for businesses? And then I know a number of programs were listed. I just want to clarify, can businesses qualify and receive benefits in multiple programs?
And I will, to my understanding, that, and I'll ask Ms. Ferick or Mr. DeLong to confirm, but there are multiple ways businesses can be eligible, but there are some in which there is some difficulty. So for instance, like on the CARES Act for restaurants, in order to get the benefit of getting support to convert the loan into a grant with the condition that you have to rehire your staff, go back to previous staffing levels, well, that might be more challenging for businesses that had little cash, not as much cash available to rehire employees without the guarantee that the business will be fully reopened within a month or so to sustain the employees that they just rehired. So those are, I mean, that's one of the concerns. The other might be eligibility in terms of being able to prove operations, being in business longer than some of the minimum requirements. And I'll defer to Ms. Ferick or Mr. DeLong on some of the other challenges that we've heard.
Well, I guess my input on that is I think it affirms the need to have a team to help folks navigate, because it's really cumbersome and difficult for people to identify which programs they qualify for, what they're eligible for, what extent of that assistance will be. So I think having a team that can help will be essential.
And Mayor, and I think that is what, my understanding, not only within the city, but the chamber has offered that assistance, not only to their members, but to anyone that needs assistance. And we have our retail effort that we initially started up prior to the COVID issue. We have retailered that program with Mr. App to be more focused on providing some of that assistance. Erica, Karen, do you have any other feedback?
Just a couple of things that I would mention. The paycheck protection program loans, there is a link to mypaycheckprotection.com. And that website, I did go through some of the different websites, really provides good user-friendly information and ways of applying and, you know, trying to understand how these things impact you. That one was a really good website. So that program, the small business debt relief program that the Right Place is administering that program here in our area, it's my understanding that the application period has closed for that program, but there is a link to get more information on that there. And then there's the economic injury disaster loans and economic, I'm sorry, emergency economic injury grants. And again, there is a link there for information about those programs and how to apply. And I did find most of those websites to be very helpful and user-friendly. As far as the small business tax provisions, there were two mentioned, the employee retention credit and the delay of payment of employer payroll taxes. Those are the two that if you take advantage of the paycheck protection program, you're not able to also do those two tax incentive options.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thanks.
I would just say that, you know, as the mayor said, the business investment team is a key actor in trying to make sure that people get to the right place at the right time with the right information. And so we'll be focusing on making sure that there are no gaps and that we're getting businesses the information that they need.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'll hit mute, and I'll let my colleagues weigh in. It looks like Commissioner Jones has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we could look at page 15, slide number 15. I am just curious to find out if more information could be provided about the public safety incidents that have been reported. Just curious, those numbers, I'm looking at those numbers for the 911 incidents, and just curious about the ones that were COVID-19-related and just really wanting to get an overall picture of what's happening with public safety and what we're hearing.
Okay. And what I will do is our police chief and fire chief are both on the call, on the video conference now. I'm going to ask them to come online and share with us what those 911 incidents have been that were COVID-related. I will start with fire, then police. Chief Lehman, are you there?
Yes, I believe my mic is open. My camera's having a hard time spinning up, and so as long as you can, I'll start.
It's reversed.
Oh, so no mic?
No, we can hear you, we just can't see you, but go right ahead.
Okay. So the GRFD 911 incidents, so what we're seeing is call volume is down right now, and we're averaging somewhere in the range of 15 to 20 COVID-related responses daily. And when we say COVID-related responses, those are anything that would be in any way related. So for example, this is people that are symptomatic, where we're assisting the ambulance because they're having difficulty breathing, and that goes down as a COVID-related response. It could be somebody having a psychological issue because of the kind of anxiety around the incidents that are driving things. And it also could be related to maybe domestic violence that is related because of, you know, being homebound. So it's kind of real broad-ranging, but what we've done is asked our officers as they're entering the reports that if you feel that this incident was any way, shape, or form associated with the pandemic, to go ahead and check the box.
Chief Payne, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. And that's the same for the police department also. It's not confirmed cases that our officers have had contact with, it's where they believe there is a possibility that they've had contact with someone infected or showing signs of symptoms. We've had cases where someone may have had some of the indicators, and they have been tested, they came back negative. But this is actually being more precautious on the possibility.
Okay. And I do want to clarify, if you go to the very next slide on Slide 16, on those non-emergencies, so those were emergencies calls, so on those non-emergency calls that were complaints about social distancing or whether or not some business should be open, those were triaged through 311 and were the 122 number Ms. Glover had mentioned earlier.
Very good, thank you. One other quick follow-up question, and that is, Chief Payne, are those numbers for 911 incidents, are those lower than average, or is that the average number between that time period of March 12 and April 4?
It's actually lower. I believe that's lower for fire department also, as Chief Lehman mentioned.
Yeah.
We're tracking lower just overall incidents where calls are coming in.
Very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Santi, can you take the screen down so we can see who has their mic open, questions?
Chief, City Manager, I have a question in reference to what is the city doing for mental health purposes for employees and staff?
I want to make sure, what are we doing for mental health purposes? We have made sure, as you heard earlier, the internal communication about employee resources and wellness. Our wellness coordinator has been communicating with employees. Our health and benefits group has sent out information about additional services through our EAP. We're encouraging people to take the proper time off if needed and not to come to work that's ill. And I'm going to ask Ms. Foster, who is on the line, to provide any other insights to your question that perhaps I've not covered or need to expound on a little bit more.
You properly covered it, and so we are going to be getting several communications out. Our wellness person in the morning and in the afternoon has meditations that she's doing online with staff. And then there's actually a workout, just 10 minutes at noon every day also. And then we do have the EAP, and we're going to be getting more information out on EAP throughout this process.
I think pretty much what I'm looking for is, are we partnering with Pine Rest for anyone that might have some anxiety, some fear?
Our vendor for that is Encompass, but it's the same as Pine Rest that you would be saying, so it's our mental health vendor is Encompass.
Okay. But to answer your question, Commissioner, we are making all resources available to our employees that we can include physical as well as mental health support. And the police department has and fire department have additional resources within those departments to help with officer wellness as well.
Thank you, the report is excellent, I appreciate it.
Mayor, Commissioner Usasi?
Thanks for putting this together and getting us this information, and appreciate everyone's work. My question, I have something that's more specific around some funding, and then wanted to expand upon Commissioner Jones's point around the disaggregation of the calls. I think the communication on behalf of the city and coordination with the county has been great. And you kind of talked about, I think we always talk about, is there information overload? But I've gotten a couple of questions from people about, particularly concerned about scams during this time as it's related to people who might be receiving funding, particularly targeting those who, you know, could be part of elderly population or individuals who have lower literacy levels or anything like that. So I'm particularly interested in the calls that might be around scams or people who feel that they have, might be facing like a digital crime against them. So that's part of the disaggregation that I'm interested in. So I don't expect a question, but I'll just put that to add to Commissioner Jones. About the CDBG funding, that's great, happy to hear that. But I know that a number of our neighborhood associations were concerned about the fact that obviously we're living in a new reality and the ways that they're connecting with one another have completely changed. I've had the opportunity to attend neighborhood association meetings via Zoom for a couple of different organizations and just staying connected that way. But I know they're particularly concerned about the reporting requirements and activities that would have previously been reimbursed. And so just want to put that out there again. I don't know that we have all the answers at this point, but we are living in a new reality. Certainly, private philanthropy has been very flexible during this time. I'm not sure what the federal government will do, but I am hopeful that we can work with our neighborhood associations and other entities who have received this funding to still be able to keep that intact with what are their activities that they're doing today.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. On the first question, that is in terms of consumer protection, individual protection from fraud, I want to go back to a point that was made earlier in the brief about the cyber crimes, or cyber crimes or complaints. And I can't find the slide, but it reported what we were referring to 211. So I may ask Ms. Glover to come back on and address that question for us in terms of data that we're tracking. Prior to COVID, that was our approach, was to refer those issues to 211. And so if we have any data, we can research that. You can take it down. So if we have any data, we can research that. But I think your point about enforcement efforts now in light of COVID is important, particularly for disadvantaged communities. So I think the governor's also implemented some of the protections at the state level that the AG's office will help us enforce, and Ms. Ferick can help remind us of those. But I'll start with Ms. Glover. Do we have any data on how many calls we have received since COVID for cyber issues or fraud?
What I'll do, Mr. Managers, I'll take a look and see that. But at this point, I don't believe that we've had any of those. If we do, we have a script that literally takes us to 211, because they are the ones that oversee that actually for the police behalf as well. And so I know that they have it. So I will go back and make sure to research that and get that if we've had any of those calls. But I'll also make sure that we're ready and prepared, should we get any in the future based on inquiry.
Okay. And Ms. Ferick, what about the emergency orders that were put in for consumer protection around COVID?
Off the top of my head, I'm not thinking of any emergency orders that have come in for consumer protection, but there may be one that I'm just not thinking of. But I do know that the Attorney General's Office has been very engaged in this effort and that there are resources available, both you can call, you can go online to make complaints, and they are following up on many of those complaints. So I can provide that information in a follow-up email to the commission, and we'll make sure we get that posted on our webpage if it's not already there.
Okay, thank you.
And I just had one other question, thank you. Around our physical distancing in parks and on our trails and things like that, I know we shared a press release last week reminding the public that we need to make sure that we are physically distancing while we are enjoying our parks. And obviously, one of the slides in the presentation talked about, you know, the warnings to individuals as they're going and enjoying outdoors, especially with this, well, a couple days ago, better weather. So I So I've had a couple of people who have been very concerned about, you know, certainly seeing people walking have shared the information that was shared at the at the top of the presentation around our efforts to educate and inform. And I know the neighborhood associations have talked about receiving that that information from the police department and sharing that. But, you know, I I think as as it gets warmer, is this something that we're going to continue to monitor? You know, day to day, I know different states are doing different things. Going on my daily walks is the is the thing that helps me. But I I know a number of people are concerned about just the amount of people in certain parks. I I I didn't go to Riverside the other day just for that, for that reason myself.
And and those are things that we're concerned about as well, and we've been trying to balance the need to make sure that there's appropriate recreation, but that people are not congregating. And so what what you heard earlier, particularly where where we know that there'll be contact sports, like for instance, the basketball courts or some of the other recreational places where, you know, lots of people can congregate and come in close contact with each other by the nature of the event itself. We're trying to educate. There are some things we can do to limit access in areas. There there are places where it's gated and guarded, but there's other places where it's it's just very open. And so we're trying to balance that need to to do education. And I think recently we've got complaints about people at dog parks. And there are too many people congregating in those areas. And so before we just automatically close it down, we're going to try to do more education to see if that will will help around social distancing. And I think our Parks Director is is on the line, and I'll ask Mr. Marquardt to to offer any other insight.
Yeah, City Manager, you touched touched on all the highlights. What we are beginning with is signing all of these amenities that you saw as a part of today's presentation, warning individuals not to use those types of amenities because they are those high-touch-point amenities within our parks. In addition to that, we are doing regular postings and reminders on our social media channels. The Parks Recreation Facebook page and the webpage as well that talk about the CDC's recommendations and guidance on social distancing. So we are trying our best to continually push that information out there so that it is at the top of people's minds as they're using our park facilities.
Okay. And then to Commissioner Usasi's earlier question about programming CDBG funds. We'll we'll have another conversation next week related to the allocation. I think we have a public hearing that that will be scheduled for the fourteenth. And so we'll try to do some follow-up in advance of that public hearing about some of those concerns.
Thank you.
Mr. Repar?
Yes, thank you, City Manager Washington. This is a really great update. And so thankful for all the city staff. What an amazing team that has just been working nonstop. And I really have just full confidence in in the staff and the teams that you've assembled to prioritize people. And, you know, it's also really important to me that as we talk about recovery, that we make sure that we remove barriers to certain individuals who might not have access to the other safety nets that are in place. But looking at the teams that you assemble, I'm very confident that that'll be considered. I did have one question. I think I know who to go to for my questions about recovery. We, Commissioner O'Connor and I virtually met with our neighborhood associations yesterday. And thank you, Commissioner Usasi, for bringing up their concerns about their activities for the future. Those are shared in the first word. But also, there was a lot of discussion about downtown and the homeless. And and I just was wondering who the the best staff person is for me to connect with to ask my questions and to pass on some of the questions we got yesterday around the homeless team and the outreach that's happening with that. And there were some ideas that were shared as well that I could pass along.
I I think to, in general, Ms. Bohach has been the person that's been handling the the general questions about how we serve the homeless population or our guests in our community. Regarding the outreach team, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief, we were we were actually planning this effort. This was part of our already anticipated plan to deploy it, but with funding and getting more funding for funding for it. And we said, well, if it's just that important, let's just particularly now since we have are able to reshift staffing levels, let's let's just see if we can do something now. So if you have questions about the outreach effort that that we currently have, you can send your question to Chief Lehman or Chief Payne. And I'll ask him to come on and talk a little bit more about how they're actually operationalizing it right now. And we've talked about even scaling it up to get a social services worker to accompany the team. But Chief Lehman or Chief Payne, are you able to come on and offer some more insight?
Yes, sir. This is Chief Lehman. So I'm really sorry, my camera's not working because I really look good today. So the the homeless outreach team, and we're yet to arrive at a name on this. We're meeting on Thursday afternoon to really hire iron out more details. But we were able to, the concept is a policeman and a fireman would be together as a team, working to understand those issues around educating the homeless right now on their gathering, on their, you know, kind of hand washing, making sure that if they have any any symptoms, that they know where to go for help, that that we can direct them. Making sure that when we do have positive test cases in that community, that we can understand, you know, kind of and and be those boots on the ground that are able to understand the extent of the kind of spread. Also networking with the shelters and the social service agencies to make sure that we're developing the relationships better be able to steer these folks in the in the right direction right now. The team right now is going to be seven days a week, eight hours a day. But those hours are going to be looked at and adjusted accordingly very shortly once the team is in place and able to gain some working knowledge of what better hours would suit that. And those are, it is a work in progress, but we are very adaptable and and open to hearing any ways that we might be able to assist in many different areas.
And I just might add, that meeting on Thursday, hopefully we can have better understanding of how this will work. But as the city manager mentioned, this is something we were working with with Ms. Bohach and trying to get it launched before. And this is a great opportunity to get it in place now. So hopefully we can have some more as it develops, more information for you in the future.
Ms. Bohach, do you have anything else to add? Your mic, your mic, your mic's not on. Oh, let's see. All right, go for it. I I can't hear. Can you all hear her? We can't hear you. Okay, maybe Commissioner Moody can.
I can't hear her either.
Okay, all right. He can't hear you either. All right. If you get back on, let us know if you have more information to add.
Mark, this is Mayor. It's unfortunate that you can't hear Connie's response because she's been really active in this space and has been working closely with the county even in getting the satellite space set up and available. And I know she continues to work with a number of nonprofits. So perhaps once some of those finalized details are in place and a more comprehensive plan to do everything we can to prevent the spread within our with individuals experiencing homelessness, maybe we can pull this from her in writing, City Manager, even next week at our commission meeting.
Yeah, that sounds good.
As it relates to the issues around homelessness and social distancing and public congregating, I think that you had mentioned earlier the special defense department redeploying some of their resources to various support providers. But if we have hand wash stations and things of that nature, that if restrooms are closed at parks, we have known areas of people congregating in our community like South of Michigan. If we have the availability to put hand wash stations in higher concentration places just as a way to help, you know, encourage them to be, to wash their hands. Might be, might be beneficial.
Yeah, I think I think that's a good point in light of us closing some of the public restrooms. And 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 that is something that we've seen across communities. Matter of fact, the state has done that in their own own parks. But I I think you're you're right. We have to have, be mindful of some kind of hygiene alternative for for that population. So, Mr. Marquardt, have have, do we have any mobile hand sanitizer stations out in the public domain at this point? I I don't know if we do or not.
City Manager, I do think we do have a few in some of our more regional parks right now. We would have to check with our contractors that typically deliver those and place those in our parks to see what their capacity would be at this point, but we can look into that.
So let's, we'll follow up on that, Commissioner, not only in parks, but other areas where we where we know that there may be a need for that. And so Chief Lehman and Chief Payne, as you talk to your team, can you work with the logistics crew and the Parks Department in in deploying that?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you so much, City Manager and team, for putting together such a thorough presentation to give us a, to provide an update for the commission and the public with the city's response to COVID nineteen. I have a few questions, and I'm also looking at the so I recognize that I won't be able to ask probably any of them our schedules. But if it's okay, I want to kind of reach out to those persons who were providing presentation point throughout today's presentation. I know Allison and I have some questions about kind of the federal language that they're using, like with confirmed cases. But then we have state language we're using with presumptive positive cases. And just to make sure I understand that and to understand how many tests have been given and and to fully understand that every time I feel like I understand changes. And thank you, Commissioner Repar, for asking a question about homelessness. I was, I have further questions about that, as well as our undocumented neighbors and the needs that they have during this time. But one thing I will say before I kind of table the rest of my items is on page two of the supplemental document you presented.
Hold on, Commissioner, let me, let me ask everyone. Could you please, please put your phone on, I mean, your phone, your lines on mute, please, so we're getting a little interference.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
So on page two, under the six-person public assistance, food assistance, it says ninety-two dollars. I suspect that that is a typo and that there is a digit missing there. And I don't know if this is going to be public or not, but wanted to make sure that you all saw that that needed to be updated beforehand. And thank you for your wisdom and pausing to to try to develop a program for businesses regarding the federal and state assistance and waiting to see kind of what happens with that and those dollars with our businesses so that we can truly meet the needs of of what the businesses currently need as opposed to being kind of another layer that that adds. What I've been hearing is confusion with all of the various grants that are out there. So thank you for that. And my other question, which I don't know that who to go to about this, but I'm curious to know about with Detroit's disparities, I'm curious to know who are we and how are we engaging with Detroit as our neighbor in the state? Have we had any conversations with any of our sister cities since this is a worldwide pandemic? And then kind of what are we doing about that? And just, you know, curious to know what, how we can support. I know Spectrum, I was on a call yesterday with them, and they were talking about providing access locally for Detroit. And then because they know that possibly they may have a need later. And so I'm just curious to know who I can go to for that question. And I think the rest of them, I'll just, I'll just wait and maybe I can call you and you can talk me through who I should go to for the other.
Okay. So the, we'll we'll get the document corrected. I think you make a good point. I think that the best way in this instance to coordinate questions about the actual emergency response is to send them either to me or to the EOC, Ms. Ms. Farrell. And we'll make sure it gets to the appropriate appropriate person because we have multiple people working on the same issue. As you just seen, you asked a question about homelessness. It's not a person, it's a group of people or about business recovery, it's a group of people. So the the best way with with coordinating would will probably be just going through the EOC and we'll make sure the right person gets the right right question. Regarding the the learning from other communities, that we're all learning our way through this. And one of the best notions that I've heard was actually with the call with on the U S Conference of Mayors, as we talk about learning our way forward. Yes, every every community is is reacting differently. But I've been on calls with managers from across the country who are learning both in in the Midwest as well as in some of the areas where the the disease is spreading, trying to see what they're doing in their response. Some of our departments have been talking to peers around the country. I know the mayor has talked to other mayors across the country and and the governor, the governor herself. I mean, a lot of what we're doing is is modeling after after other state responses. And so we're all, we're all learning from each other. But but I I I do hesitate as we learn because everybody's emergency mode. And just because someone's doing it doesn't mean it's been well thought through in another area. And so I get emails all the time, well, this city's doing this, this state is doing that. And and sometimes it's just political announcement with no implementation strategy. And so we can come out with lots of announcements to put out on Facebook, to put out in media. But we got to be real careful that we have implementation strategy because if you come out with an announcement with no actual plan, then you'll have a lot of people frustrated that, you know, it just adds to, as you said earlier, the frustration. So I think I think what what I am learning from other communities, even as we, you know, Minneapolis, that seems to be a lot of conversation now, well, Minneapolis is not like they just created millions of dollars. Some of that was already reprogrammed federal funding that they had, the same conversation we're going to have next week. There is some new money, but not all of that is is new money as we're learning. Some of that is around federal programming and being more aggressive with CDBG funding that has not been used just for nonprofits, but also for businesses in impacted impacted areas. Some of some of the programs that they have in Minneapolis were existing programs that they have for business assistance that has been infused and expanded. So so and and we're seeing that, and and I just say that as that that's a recent one. But there are other cities across the state and and the country who are likewise either amplifying programs that they already have or if it's if it's new programming, and we've heard some of the the assistance that was, I think, in in one of the the shore cities, either Muskegon or I can't remember the exact city, but they they came up with a program for the lakefront businesses. That's a small district. That that that's a, that's not even a full business district in in our city. That's that's real, real small, but it's it's helpful. But if we were to come up with a program, we have to be specific. Okay, are we targeting a specific district? Are we making this available citywide? I I in just the details around it. And so I I I appreciate what you've said about making sure that as we see what's happening across the cities in the country, we understand the context and what they're doing it and makes making sure that it's good for Grand Rapids. I go back to the question that I think the mayor started off with about, you know, and all these federal programming, you know, basically where where are things not working or where people may get hung up in processes? And the first businesses that were shut down, that were actually shut down, as I recall the sequencing, it's been almost an order a day for the past, you know, almost month. But it was really the retail in a day for the past, you know, almost month, but it was really the retail and restaurant businesses and those that had that kind of interaction. And they may be the first to be shut down and the last to be fully reopened. And so if our strategy is going to be, because we're supposed to be Beer City, Beer City and Food City, and I mean, that is part of our identity. And if we, if we lose that part of our identity as part of this crisis, we have to be very diligent about, you know, how do we go about making sure that doesn't suffer along with everything else that's part of our community. So, and I know I'm taking a little bit longer to respond, but I think it's that kind of, it's that complicated. And that is why we have so many other people helping us to figure it out. I appreciate what the Right Place is doing around their assistance with manufacturers and large and midsize employers, industrial employers, and making sure that that part of our identity remains intact and that we can recover from that. But I think, I think we're all learning together. We're all learning together.
Since no one else is speaking, quick question about the city's revenue to date. I don't think I saw anything or heard anything about what kind of loss we've had to date and what kind of projections. And I know that target will change as the dates and closures change, but if you have a number, great. If not, I'll add that to my list of other questions.
Well, we're working on that number, and that is a, that is a very, very important, very important calculus as we consider the budget that's due on the 28th. And it varies. It depends on the economist. We heard from the GBSU economist, Mr. Paul, and I can't recall his last name, but his projection was for our local recovery. If we get the all clear in June, that we'll have sooner, we'll have a better recovery than most. And so we're trying to interpret what does that mean for the rest of this fiscal year, as well as fiscal year '21. And it is a revenue shortfall. And we've had various numbers, revenue shortfall, because we're going to, the income tax loss, the fact that all the subsidies that are being provided from unemployment are not necessarily taxable locally, we're going to lose that revenue. But that's why it's important for us to restart the economy, because even though the city may not get it, people still have some disposable income to recirculate an economy. But right now, it's not being recirculated. So we have various numbers. I don't want to alarm the public at this point, but we're going to take about another week or so, and when we submit the budget proposal, that will be our best estimate of the impact for this year and next year. But it is, it will be a loss of revenue. Before we were projecting that we were going to have four and a half percent increase in general fund revenue prior to COVID. That will not be the case. I don't think we'll have the four and a half. We'll probably have a decrease. And so that's, we're trying to, we know it's a loss of four and a half. We're trying to determine how much more than that.
Thanks, thanks, City Manager. I'll add to that, because Commissioner Lanier, those are both really good points that you made there at the end. And in addition to budget projections, which hopefully we'll have at least a sense of with the City Manager's budget presentation later this month, the other thing I know I've been concerned about is the impact on our pension funds with the current market. And I think there's a lot of moving parts right now. One thing that I am optimistic about, and many of you may have already read about this, is that on the federal level, they're looking at a fourth package, and part of that would be support for cities. In the first cares package, it was only available to cities over a population of 500,000. And so a lot of cities who are struggling and who are going to have significant costs because of COVID, have been, that is, they have been actively, actively working on making sure that cities are included if there is another, another package. So we'll keep you updated on that. Michigan Municipal League has been very active on that front, as has the National League of Cities and the U.S. Conference of Mayors. City Manager, any, any final thoughts before we sign off? This was a great update. I think all of the commissioners agree that this has been very helpful for us to get this very thorough and detailed briefing and update.
Mayor, thank you. Again, my appreciation to the staff and to all of you for your availability and patience. We'll try to get the information out. And I look forward to re-engaging on the 14th. The clerk will give us more instruction on the 14th. It will be a little bit more challenging because we'll have comments from the public at that time.
Yeah, can I jump in a minute, Mark?
Sure.
Yeah, while we have everybody here, the format I'm looking at, we changed some of the formats for the morning meetings, so they're not, so CD and fiscal, so community development and fiscal are not the same time. They're going to be in a row. So there'll be one WebEx meeting for the morning meetings, so you can jump in and jump out of a meeting. So if you're like on committee appointments, you can join the committee appointments meeting, and then leave the meeting, and then come back. And we'll have those times, but it'll be eight o'clock for appointments, 8:30 for fiscal, 9:15 for CD, and then 10 o'clock for committee of the whole. So that'll be one meeting, and then we'll have a separate meeting for the evening meeting. So that's kind of how we're, otherwise, we're going to have like three or four different meetings, and I don't want people getting confused. So you can join a meeting, and you can leave a meeting, and then come back in as well. So that's, that's the plan for Tuesday. There'll be two different invites that you'll receive. I think as a whole, this went surprisingly well, once we got everybody on. And, you know, anytime you start a new technology, there's a learning curve. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Commission, for your grace and patience as we go through this. You know, as I said, we're on uncharted territories. I feel for my clerk friends in Wisconsin who are running an election today. So I'm glad we got our election in. But thank you for this, as we tried a new platform today. And as, I think it worked well, but it will be different as we have dialogue and discussion back and forth on Tuesday.
Right. And again, let me also want to thank all the labor unions that have worked very collaboratively with us to work on our workforce issues, like other employers that you're reading about. You didn't have to read about any of our issues. We were able to work with them. And so I think they understand, too, we're all on the same team. We're all in this together, trying to get through, make sure we do right by the citizens of Grand Rapids. So I want to thank them. City Attorney, did you have anything else you'd like to share? Her office has been just outstanding. I can't tell you how much we rely on our city attorneys, because these declarations and orders between Ms. Ferriek and Ms. Hitchcock, they help us so much interpret what it means for us locally. And so they have been very, very responsive. Anything you'd like to add? Your mic?
There I am. Thank you, City Manager. I'd just like to say, I appreciate you as well. This has been a lot and a lot of work and fast-moving. And if, one of the greatest things about times like this is it brings everybody together, and we're running the race together. Thank you.
All right, Mayor, back to you.
All right. So with that, I just want to say, it is reassuring to be in this together. And to all my colleagues on the commission, I am very grateful to be serving with all of you during this time. So I've said it multiple times, almost every time I'm interviewed, what gives me hope is that we are a really strong community, and we will get through this together, and we will figure it out. As City Manager said, we are figuring out as we go, but we're doing that together. So it's good to see you. We'll await some additional instructions for next week's meetings. Hopefully, we'll be able to figure out those without a hitch and make sure that the community can weigh in in a thoughtful way, but also that we'll be able to get through the items that we need to get through. So with that, I will see you next week. Stay safe.